We're gonna be letting prayer tonight for our Public Works Director, Zach Ratcliffe. Zach?
Thank you, sir. Let's all bow our heads, please. For your kind aggression, Father, we do come to you tonight, Father. We thank you for all that you do, all that you're going to do. Lord, we thank you for this Fannie County. We thank you for all the things that you do for us and keep us safe in this county. Or we just ask you to be with the Commissioners tonight as they make decisions to move this county forward. Or we just ask that you, if these guys, if anything they say and do, would be pleasing to you, Lord. We just thank you, Lord, for each and every one of them. Lord, just ask you to protect them and keep them safe, Lord. Or we just ask these things that you're ever so holy now. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Zach.
Your only pledge, Your Elegance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a statement. All right, unfinished business number two. We have approval of the minutes of the February 27th, 2024 regular scheduled board meeting, and also the minutes of the March 7th, 2024 work session. We'll start with our regular scheduled board meeting, February 27th. Commissioner Cersey, you notice any errors or omissions on those minutes?
No, sir.
Commissioner Patterson?
I have no objection to him.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve those meetings from February 27th, regular scheduled board meeting, and ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we are minutes of the March 7th, 2024 work session. Gentlemen, any errors or omissions on those minutes?
I have none, sir.
I have none, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the March 7th, 2024 work session. Ask for a second.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Also, unfinished business, we have a table of variance request from Ancler Holdings LLC to build a UTV garage. At that time, it was 10 feet from the edge of the river being the lane. Gentlemen, I think Mr. Nicholson actually went out, changed that to 14 feet, I think they raised on that.
That's what I've got.
Okay. Is there anyone here that opposes this variance request? Is anyone here for it? You got four more feet out of them, keep good, y'all. All right, that being said, I'll make a motion to approve this variance request and ask for a second.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, unfinished business. We have board discussion action with our Fire Chief Larry Thomas and Deputy and Lady Director Patrick Kuth. We have the bid opening for two 2,000 gallon tanker tender apparatus and one 4,000 gallon tanker tender apparatus. Gentlemen, we'll let Miss Dawson get back.
She comes out on the outside, Danny.
Oh, gotcha. I was thinking she was thinking this was going so smooth, she was going, "Wait."
She's just right outside the door.
Back to tell us a little story or something.
Back to tell a little reason. He sits right outside the door.
What is it, Tom, going to be a day?
Uh-oh. Congratulations.
Just gonna ask for parking that over the beach, because I got one.
Okay, so we have some, this is from Rod Craig, New York, Austin, Texas, received February the 20th, but it doesn't indicate exactly what it is, so we're gonna open it and make sure. All right, this is from Trademark Truck Sales. They sealed, they're sealed in. All right, this is for two Ludwell 20,000 gallon...
2,000 gallon?
2,000 gallon, yes, sir. Nurse truck application, and one Ludwell 4,000 gallon nurse truck application. The 2,000 gallons are $149,462 each, for a total of $298,924. And the 4,000 gallon application amount is $195,994, for a total bid of $494,918.
I'm sorry, $494,1?
$494,918.
$494,918, yes, sir.
All right.
Now, these are ones that you, because you couldn't get much from the forestry service?
That's true. Just they weren't able to get chassis to go forward. One of these bids in place of others.
It's the same amount?
It's not the exact same amount, it's within the amount that was...
How much is it within that amount? Oh, gotta do the other one.
There's three more, two being determined.
Oh, we might do better than that.
This is from Aceela Triptup, A-C-E-L-A, out of Bozeman, Montana. All right. The bid amount, but I, the problem is I don't know what it's for. I think it's, oh, I guess it's, that it is. This ain't red color. It says one tank, 2,000 gallons. And then it says that it is $304,235.
And then that was for a 2,000?
Yes, sir. That's, that's the way I'm reading it.
Really?
That's the average.
That's standard?
Yeah, that's about, that's the average.
Okay.
Man would like to...
They're proud of him.
I didn't see the one, I didn't see anything there on the, on another side, and it says it's per unit.
Can we help you? Don't break it.
Sherry brought us some scissors. She's the person who ran one round on Christmas, no. There were blocks. A couple big blocks, a little bit. And this one's from Fouts Brothers. And it says it's a proposal for two 2,000 gallon tanker tender apparatus and one 4,000. And for the one 4,000, the price is $490,000. And for each of the two 2,000 gallon tankers, the price is $358,000, for a total of the two tankers being $716,000. And for the three units together being a bid of $1,206,000. He's on the door, and so we should have first this one up.
Ah, no, we was talking about that. Where's that, where's that last one from?
Fouts, Fouts Brothers is out of Smyrna, Georgia.
Georgia?
Yeah.
About that.
Did you see a second price in there, Sherry? I did not.
Are y'all familiar with these counties?
Yeah, that's the going price. The first bid from Litweller Trade Board, that was a simpler truck, but it would probably fill our needs. So, we probably would lean towards that one. But if it's all right, we'd like to step out quickly and look through these just to make sure there's nothing hidden in there.
Like a calm.
Two grounds and something.
I mean, goodness gracious. I mean, yeah, go out there and look at that stuff.
We might all came back before the end of the evening, get over to the meeting.
Gentlemen, it's all right, we will table this till the end of the meeting, and then we'll circle back around.
Yeah, y'all will try to get that.
All right. Take your free delivery and set up all that stuff, too.
You better go through there, Chief. You too, says the Chief.
All right, so bring us down to number five. It's board discussion action. We have our summer feeding memorandum, and you're gonna have a mental agreement with the Fannie County Board of Education. We want to come up to it, but so this is something we do annually.
It is. And listen, I read good news. I am not asking for a million dollars at all. We're just gonna feed babies and love them, and this will be a great summer. So, in front of you, you have two agreements. One is the formal contract and intergovernmental agreement between the Board of Commissioners and the Fannie County Board of Education, which basically states that our school system is going to make sure that we feed the students around to Humber today, the rec department. And that is the official agreement. The other agreement, the agreement to furnish meals for summer food service, is more of an agreement that makes the Right From The Start folks happy, but it's not a legally binding agreement, because it's really the rec department they're interested in, because we're the one orchestrating the event. But it is exactly the same as prior years, and it will be for the June and July summer rec program. Any questions? No million dollars attached to anything like that at all.
How many, how many kids would you say run through there?
We estimate the most about 200 a day for breakfast and lunch.
That's cool.
It is, it's a wonderful opportunity for our community.
It is.
It goes about a month, two months?
It does go two months. They do take off the week of, of 4th July. It'll start out, I believe it's June 6th, the dates are listed. And then we'll hand the week before school starts.
Right.
Or at least before teachers get back.
Well, see, this, it's a, it's a great program. As we know, there are a lot of our children that live below a park or eleven here in Fannie County that nobody really knows about.
It is a tremendous amount.
Any, in my mind, any way we can help those kids out, I would want to be more than able to. So, we appreciate y'all doing this as well.
Absolutely, it's our pleasure. We'll take care of our community. Got any questions?
I don't.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, any discussion on this?
I really don't.
No, no.
All right, I'll make a motion to enter into this intergovernmental agreement and memorandum with Fannie County Board of Education. I'll ask for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Jane, I think she has a copy for you and a copy for me. And if you want to send both of them, I'll present it Thursday night for the Board of Education meeting. You'll get finished up.
Thank you.
Okay, program grows each year. We, we will do that, so. All right, number six. Gentlemen, this is a board discussion action on our Fannie County website. You know, obviously, it's been brought to our attention, our website and most, you know, a lot of these ordinance updates and things like that, been brought to our attention that this is, our website's really outdated, just to be honest with you. It's not ADA compliant at this time, and there's just some updates that need to be, be made to that. The, Ms. Jacoby has done this in the past for us. This is the first time, obviously, it comes brought to our attention that we needed to do something. But she has made us a proposal to, to continue to do that and get everything up to date as need be. And she had given us on page four, if you look at the very top portion of the line, the very top portion, my rate for complete design and development is $16,000 if paid in two payments, or $15,000 if paid in full at the start of the development. And this looks like, it's now, so after six months, we can discuss my continuing with an ongoing maintenance and website content plan update. Both Emmer and Piggins counties keep it very busy in this role, so they use it as well. And if you look at their website, which I did, it's a little more up to date than ours are. Take a moment, you can read all of that if it's live. I don't know if it's the first time, I think, most of us are seeing this.
Do we have people here?
Is Ms. Jacoby here this evening?
No.
Is Patrick gonna be a part of this?
Um, I'm not sure if Patrick's gonna be a part of this, but this is, this is what Ms. Jacoby does.
So, this annual yearly fee is $139? After the, after this? That's also on page four at the bottom. Or it says it's savings, I guess.
It's yearly savings is designed for you. If she uses platform software, it does not carry any annual support fee. You have now a, a yearly savings and old design software, it will be $139 a year. So, that is a savings over what we have now.
But with that, we don't get any annual support, right? Not carry the annual support fee?
It says, "I'll use platform software that does not carry the annual support fee." So, it does have a platform software, they just may not charge us anything for this.
Okay.
So, we will have, we will have support, just not charge us fee.
I guess what Johnny asked was a good question, but who on our end is going to coordinate with you?
So, Candace, I'm sorry, Candace Newton. Candace has worked with her in the past on this, and on the first page it shows there, she spoke with Candace Newton.
Okay.
So, we would have somebody working on that.
All right, that sounds good. Jim, I'm good with it. I think we ought to look at, talk to Ms. Sherry, and she said that we could probably pay in one thing, pay some more money.
Well, I got a lot of, but I mean, yeah, it sounds good. I mean, if we have to update it, we have to update it.
Right, I mean, it's, it's a lot of, yeah, we're out of...
Yeah, I mean, but, one, I don't think I'd wanna make, it's, it's contract, too.
It is.
So.
Well, the good, the good thing about it is, you know, Gilmore and Piggins is right next to us.
Yes, I like it.
Their experience with this area.
Yeah. Okay. How you feel about?
Well, obviously, we didn't get it at the times, I mean, in, in that sense. And, you know, we just listened to some other departments here, Revanther's website. That's, that appeared to be a pretty good savings in that sense, from what they paid. Of course, they had budgeted, you know, in, in their budgets.
Yeah.
Budgets, and, but this, in a one particular one, this, several thousand cheaper. But I do know we need to get, we need to get it compliant, we need to get it to where, you know, obviously, when, when we're looking at these ordinance, it, it makes it easier for people to see and...
Yeah.
A little more user friendly, because, I mean, if you can get Jamie to use it, you can get anybody to use it.
Now, if you can get Johnny to use it, you can do that.
We'll go on that deal.
Great argument.
And I'm gonna put on another, I'm sure that Johnny can use it.
Yeah, definitely. Well, where's this, where's the funds coming out of, Sherry?
General fund.
Okay.
We gonna go $15,000?
I think we...
I don't know, I'm buying that.
That's good.
All right, well, that being said, I'll ask for a motion that we approve this website update for $15,000 in one thing.
I'll make a motion.
I'll ask for a second.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Get that, get that favor. Can you reach up there and grab Larry? He's on, he's up next to Larry, believe it or not.
So, you don't even buy fireworks, do you?
That's a plan, will we?
Yeah.
All right, so number seven, we have board discussion action. Ms. Huffman couldn't be here tonight, so Chief Thomas is gonna be here regarding purchase in the, I don't know, an eighty million dollars. Take him to the state, please.
I don't want to do that.
Which is called, it's a state, it's...
No, I don't think so.
Thank you, sir. Actually, it's $14,232.96 reference to six sets of turnout gear. We're about to get called it up, but then again, with the number of folks that we got, it's gonna be a while before we do get completely called up as far as having five years in, five years out. Turnout gear's worth 10 years, and we're trying to get them into a rotation, but we're, we're never putting anybody in any gear that's over 10 years old.
So, didn't we just buy like a bunch of turnout gear?
I think over the last year, we've probably bought close to, and I'm not, I'm going with both numbers, the numbers that volunteers buy too. and I'm not, I'm going with both numbers, the numbers that volunteers buy too, along with the money that we pay for the paid folks. So, close to 70, maybe 90,000.
And that's, that's a combination of volunteer and,
And county.
Yes.
And so these here are, uh, these, so these are new?
That's pants coat and suspenders.
For how many more?
Six.
Okay. And this is, you're not replacing anything, you're just adding two?
No, we're actually replacing six people in their turnout gear, trying to get them out of it.
Okay. I got you. That's good.
Okay.
Ms. Pratt from the other place?
No, I have nothing. Because I think they need it to get on a rotation basis.
Just become a public safety sponsor?
Chief, do y'all, uh, use those stickers like the Zach and his department does with the splash, pay by splash?
Oh, yeah. We actually have a sign made out there for Station Five.
Okay.
Uh, as far as the trucks that we've got, I don't think we've, I'd have to look back on it before I make a bid to, to see per statement on it. I don't think we have a one or two trucks now that's been paid for over the several splash.
Okay.
Thank you. Can we put that on this gear?
So, um,
All right, gentlemen, any other discussion on this?
No.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve $14,232.96 out of public safety splats for new turnout gear. Ask for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thanks, sir. We'll circle back to, on number four, did y'all have, I mean, I know you've got a ton of this to go on, just, uh,
Yes, we've, uh, we've got a pretty good idea. We could, uh, talked to this company in the past about the similar truck. So we had a pretty good idea of, of what they offered. But we would like to recommend a cheaper bid, uh, for $494,118 for the three trucks. And, uh, just to let y'all know what these are replacing, these are replacing a 1974 Ford, a 1986 Ford, and a 1985 GMC, so.
What was that last one, Patrick?
It's a 1985 GMC.
Okay.
Maybe we'll get used to that and that.
So, they're much needed upgrades.
Yeah.
How soon are you talking about getting this equipment?
Uh, I think they said it'll need six to eight weeks.
They have free delivery?
Both, right.
Just in the sticks. We're gonna have to get two or three, we'll go down there and get them. Get the coffee ready on the first.
You can't get them.
I can. Well, ask permission.
He can go as part of the driving train.
I'll add room. I'm writing that down here. All right. Well, thank you very much. Uh, gentlemen, any discussion on this? I know, um, the original advice that we had talked about, um, and y'all remember we were trying to get four or five trucks from, from Forest Service and it's awful close to that amount that we had actually, uh, allocated.
Yeah, over like 92 piece with there or something.
Yeah. Um, so we'll, and I think all of them are 2,000, which we're getting 4,000 gallon here.
Correct. Those are 2,000. This, this we're getting two 2,000 or 4,000.
Use chassis and they are brand new.
They are brand new trucks.
Okay.
Cool.
They'll last a while.
These will be paid on the harvest funds, so theoretically, that helps higher taxpayers.
So we're gonna be paying about a hundred grand more than, a little over a hundred grand?
For brand new ones.
Yes.
And they'll afford about 40,000.
Yeah, two, more, more, yeah.
All right. Any more discussion, gentlemen?
I have none, gentlemen.
No, I'm good.
All right.
They keep that public safety.
Keep public safety and just make it more sizable.
It's gonna be, we're gonna be good now, right?
We'll get there.
We get, we're getting there.
Two now.
As long as we're getting there, you know?
Till next time.
And that's helping that like ISO rating and all that, ain't it? This fact stuff like that, don't it?
Everything else is, yes.
Well, let's keep on working on it. Good job.
All right. Well, gentlemen, I'll make the motion that we go with trademark truck sales, uh, two 2,000 gallon, one 4,000 gallon tanker. Uh, total price, $494,918 for all three. And ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, just don't know, I mean, that's a changeable point that was 50 years ago, right?
It's up and running.
Yeah, that's on. Thank you very much. All right. So that brings us down to public commentary. If anybody would like to, uh, say anything, please raise your hand, come up and tell us where you're from.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
My name's Richard Massey. I reside at 1031 Black Apple Creek Road, Cherry Log, in Fannie County, not Gilmore. And, uh, I would like to know if I could, uh, get permission to address the, uh, the short-term rental ordinances of, uh, 2023, 1024.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Well, first of all, I'd like, excuse me, I'd like to say, uh, I appreciate the work that was involved, uh, that was put forth by everyone that was involved in this. I think some of this we've been for quite some time, but I did have a couple of questions, if I may.
Sure.
The first one is, will the Sheriff's Department and code enforcement be allowed to enforce these ordinances by writing citations and issuing fines?
So it's known as they will be, um, if the sheriff, if the sheriff's office does and feels that a citation is warranted, he will write that citation from the sheriff's office. Um, if a code enforcement officer goes down there, it would be, uh, if I'm not mistaken, in the form of a summons. So there would, there would be a chance that a citation or summons would be involved, yes.
Okay. Uh, and that was pertaining to Section 10 violations and penalties, Section 11 certificates, suspensions and revocations, which that would cover that as well.
Correct.
Okay, so. All right. And the next one was, uh, I have a question about the noise abatement ordinance of February 19th, 2024. Was that, uh, was that something that was added later or amended from the original?
No, sir, not yet. Um, in other words, uh, the noise ordinance, the public hearing for the noise ordinance will be coming up next Tuesday on the 19th at 4:30. Um, when we were doing the short-term rental ordinance, um, it was to, our understanding, we would go ahead and put that in that ordinance. And once we pass the noise ordinance, then it would automatically be in the short-term ordinance as far as that goes. So that was, uh, that was our understanding. So, um, again, those will be on the 19th and the 26th, 4:30 here, so. Well, if you can come back and give your input on that as well.
Okay. Well, I do have one question. I want to make sure that I read it right. Uh, if I may.
Sure.
It was on, uh, Section E, Paragraph 1. Uh, it concerns fireworks. And it, uh, from what I read, and I've been wrong before because I'm, I'm old and I've reached wrong some time, but it said that fireworks would be permitted from 10 a.m. to 9 p.m. any day.
So that is a proposed on the noise ordinance. Um, so that is something that, you know, obviously we put it out there, we get bored against, and then we try to make the best decision of the board. So we haven't truly, um, passed that at all. So, um, obviously, again, if you want to welcome it back on the 19th and the 26th, then, then we can have further discussion on that if we have to.
Okay. And that is, that is, when will this next would be?
The 19th, next Tuesday, and then the 26th, which will be achieved after that.
Okay.
And it'll be at 4:30 right here.
And that will be public input?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you for answering all the questions I have, and again, I appreciate you allowing me the opportunity to, to bring this up.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. How y'all doing today?
Good, well.
My address is 75 Sterling Village. My name is Christopher Francisco. I am a resident of Union County. However, I am right on the border, in fact, about 10 feet of the front of my property also is in Fannie County. So I'm right on the border there. Just a couple of observations in regards to your meeting this evening. Um, first of all, in regards to the tankers, and you might have discussed this, and maybe I missed it. Do, are those apparatuses able to access a majority of the county roads and residences? Are these apparatuses have a lifespan? And are we planning for the future of replacement of those particular apparatuses?
Typical lifespan of a fire truck, 15 years, 18 years. So we are looking at that. And, uh, as far as accessing the county, it has to be a road that will handle a truck of that size. See, we're also working on ordinances on steepness and width and driveways and stuff like that.
Okay. So we really don't know if those tankers will be accessed, the roads that are currently within the county?
Uh, I would say at least most of them, but there's gonna be places that are, uh, some of these, uh, subdivisions that were built on, uh, very, very steep slopes and stuff.
I get that.
That, uh, that we, we don't have trucks now that would go in there.
I understand. Okay. Thank you very much for your input. Secondly, um, and I love kids and I love the partnership that we say we're gonna have with the kids in the summer. My, uh, comment on that is, are we gonna partner with any other community organizations within Fannie County to maybe increase that number from 200 and maybe more? Uh, like churches and other organizations that are already out there in the community that might see a need that we don't see at the school system. Because sometimes those organizations do see places that are not served, or maybe they can't get to the school to get a meal or what have you. So just a, a, you know, comment there. In regards to the web platform, um, I didn't hear anything in regards to web security. As you know, today's time, you know, we have hackers all over the place. Is it in there?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't go there.
That's right. That's fine. It's just, it's a big thing. Dear my heart, because web security is very, and are they insured to handle, so if somebody does actually penetrate that, are they insured with insurance to handle the amount of money it might take to mitigate those particular intrusions?
So we do have insurance in place to, to deal with that as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate you coming up.
Can I have a question for the, for our chief of field? What percentage do you feel like that we aren't able to reach because of the slope issue?
Right now, it would probably be a fairly small amount. Uh, we've got, uh, sections of the county that run up, uh, past 37%. And, uh, we can maintain that for sh- very short distances. Uh, but if it's 37% for, say, three quarters of a mile, uh, we, we would have difficulty getting in there. Our, our biggest thing is not only the steepness, it's the width of the roads, no flat places to turn around and no pullouts to evacuate as we're coming in. If we have a running brush fire, we don't have any way to get the people out on some of these places.
We're all going in while they're to the naff.
Yeah, while they're trying to evacuate, we're trying to get in. But, uh, uh, we're going around and checking roads, uh, right now. I've got several roads that we have made notes with 911 that, uh, it would be difficult to access. Uh, we've got a couple of roads that are 47% to the house. And that's, that's virtually impossible for a truck.
Do you have another option? I mean, in cases like that, smaller vehicle?
Uh, we've got brush trucks that can go in, and that's five hundred gallon of water. And you've got, if you've got a house fire, uh, it's, just, we're just not gonna be able to access it.
Now, that doesn't mean that we're not gonna try to.
Exactly. That's not what I'm saying. We're, we're not saying we're just gonna stand there and watch it.
We're gonna take time, get a bug, and try to.
We will do something.
No, but we don't mean to think we're coming in.
And it's also, and we also have that meaning for coming in.
That's part of the grant that Patrick.
Yeah.
Let me ask you, let me ask you this. Do, do you have any short-term rentals that would be hard to get to?
Well, we don't know what short term.
Exactly. Yeah. We, we don't differentiate between residents and short-term rentals. It's just a house, you know?
So you say about 30%?
Uh, I have really no idea what the percentage would be. We just now started working on that.
Okay.
And doing mapping. Uh, there's been so much building that, uh, we don't know about, and we're planning to catch up with the land development and mapping. Uh, and all of that, uh, trying to check some of these roads and do pre-plans.
Okay. So questions I have?
Anyone else? All right. A little public commentary. And, uh, gentlemen, that brings us to executive session. Any of you guys need a, executive sessions, not executive sessions?
Aye.
All right.
All right. Like Ben said, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr.
Ask for a second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming this evening. Appreciate it.